Could have snuck out after about 20 minutes.
One minute, yeah.
Let's call the Saline City Council meeting to order if you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. We welcome everybody here. We encourage you to sign in in the back at the table on the left. There's also a sign-in sheet, or there is a sign-in sheet, of course, along with hearing devices if you require them and copies of tonight's agenda. Members present this evening are council members Girbaugh, Seo, Rice, Lesch, Harmout, Mayor Protam Dillon, and Mayor Marl. From city staff, we have Acting City Manager Cole, Clerk Royal, our DPW Director, our Community Development Director, along with our Wastewater Treatment Superintendent. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
It is submitted.
Moved by Seo to approve as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lesch. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences, so we'll proceed to public comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any person may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state their name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items? Let me defer to the city clerk with any written comments provided in advance of tonight's meeting in which the individual wanted their remarks right at this time.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Then we will proceed to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Mayor, like 2547 removed.
2547 will now become the third item under new business. Are you making a motion then to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by Rice. Thank you, ma'am. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended, noting the one subtraction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 25-42, City Manager Hiring Committee. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memorandum from Mayor Marl and to approve or not to approve the recommendation to hire Dual Hall and a not-to-exceed amount of $25,000. Is that to both acknowledge and to approve, Mr. Lesch? Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seo. The memorandum that I provided and the quote from Dual Hall Consulting is pretty self-explanatory. I'm happy to address any questions or concerns that you may have. I did not receive any in advance of tonight's meeting. I did want to welcome our, hopefully, our future consultant, April, who is with us this evening. April, would you mind coming to the podium and, not only for my council colleagues' benefit, for the public's, but for the public's benefit, talk a little bit about your background, Dual Hall Solutions, and the service you hope to provide to the city of Saline if the motion is approved this evening.
My name is April Lynch, and I work with Dual Hall Solutions as one of their organizational development specialists. If selected today, I will be your lead recruiter. I have about 32 years in local government. Myself was a city manager for quite some time and have stayed very close to the profession. Double Hall Solutions focuses on a wide array of processes and services here. As it relates, though, to our executive search, one of the things that sets us apart from most others is that we do a very concentrated search. We make sure we bring you high-quality candidates. We don't what we call post and pray. So we're very active with our cohorts here, all of the folks that are still in the profession. And we already started getting some phone calls about like who's going to do the search and what that looks like. So we're really excited to be here with you all. I was also the lead search for Zach. And again, we worked really diligently and hard to bring you a quality candidate, and he's still here after seven weeks, so that's a good sign. But I would be your lead and very familiar with the profession, as well as, you know, making sure that we have a very transparent and a process that works well for everybody involved.
Very good. The Hiring Committee had an excellent kickoff meeting, what will be two weeks Thursday. As my colleagues will recall, it consists of two staff members, three private citizens, and then three individuals from council, including myself, Councilmember Lesch, and Councilmember Rice. It is our recommendation, if you look at the proposal submitted by Dual Hall to, let me get to the appropriate page so I can read the number to you, the page number for you all, is to, of course, engage April and Dual Hall for the base executive search at a cost of $15,495. And then it was recommended actually by Councilmember Rice and then subsequently discussed and agreed upon by the committee to also utilize the strong start complete for an additional Again, for the public's benefit, April, can you explain a little bit of what the strong start complete would entail in addition to the normal search and recruitment of a new city manager?
Yeah, again, what makes us different is we understand that once the candidate is selected, the job doesn't stop there. And what it, the strong start, what we do initially is we help with an onboarding plan. We do executive coaching for the new city manager. But the strong start complete actually even engages even further about what we expect our high priorities to be, making sure that city manager walks in knowing and understanding where you want them to hit the ground running, some of the areas that they may need to really lean into and focus on at a much quicker, at a quicker pace. And it helps facilitate communication and gets, again, that strong start between you and the city manager off to a great start. So it's just a much more intensive process that will vary, again, making sure that everybody's on the same page and that new candidate, your new city manager, comes in and is able to hit the ground running.
Very good. The motion is written in such a way to provide the committee and the process a little bit of space and flexibility. Of course, if you add up the numbers, we anticipate spending about $19,500 on this process. But if there are additional services or support that can be provided by Dual Hall, we thought it was prudent to add in the extra, essentially $5,000, $5,500, in the event that it was necessary or needed. I don't want to belabor this point. Again, Councilmember Rice, you're a member of the Hiring Committee, and we're a very active participant at our first meeting. Is there anything you'd like to add at this time?
No, I appreciate the additional services that your company offers. And that, again, as the mayor was saying, is why we built in a little bit of wiggle room into this motion that we're hoping to pass tonight, the fact that you have some additional executive coaching. We've also, we really appreciate that if for some reason the candidate be removed from the position or decide to leave the position by choosing that executive option, you will then help us again. You won't just walk away from us. So there were a lot of those little additional things that we really appreciated, the opportunity to work with your company so that we can make sure that we have the right candidate. We also want to give the candidate the tools that they need to be successful to stay in the city of Saline. So I think this is well worth the additional funding requests that we're asking from our colleagues.
Mr. Lesch, anything you'd like to add as a member of the Hiring Committee?
Just that, you know, we have had good experiences with Long Hall. I mean, they did a very, what I consider to be good workshop with the Fire Board also. So a lot of different aspects to your organization that I think are very useful.
Very good. I'll open up for questions or comments from the dais. Of course, April could address questions, but perhaps her questions best addressed by either myself, Councilmembers Rice, or Lesch, respectively. Mr. Girbaugh.
April, could you give some idea about timeframe, your process, and especially how will you build criteria and input from the council in terms of what we're looking for in candidates?
Absolutely. So I think the first step that we'll take is meeting with your Hiring Committee. I think we have something scheduled for, Personnel Committee?
Hiring Committee next Thursday.
Next Thursday. And so what we'll do is we'll work together. One of the things that we do, and this is one of the things, again, that we really lean into, is we call our opportunity brochure. And so what we do is we ensure that we have a good understanding of the ideal candidate, that we set standards for, as it relates to criteria. So then when we go out and search, we make sure that we're constantly going back to that criteria that has been decided by you and your team to make sure that we have that candidate that fits the best description that we look for. So we really like to focus on not only the ideal candidate, but some opportunities and challenges that the community might be facing again in this stage of the game. Not only are you looking for a good candidate, but we want a candidate that comes in knowing they're a good fit here for Saline. So once we meet with the Hiring Committee, we take a look at making sure we have all the input. We'll create a play of action of the different types of input we want in the process, and then we'll move forward from there. I think once the brochure is done, I think you can look at anywhere between possibly about a 12- to 16-week process, depending on how quick we move things along. So we'll know more when we meet with the Hiring Committee and create a much better timeline. We'll try to truncate that as much as we can because I know that you're anxious to get somebody started. So a lot of it's in the front end, and then we have some quiet time in the middle while we start recruiting, and then we'll meet again to get some final candidates from you and your team.
So do you anticipate the hiring posting being up within two weeks?
I'm hoping by the time we meet with the Hiring Committee from there, that we would have it up by the end of March, very first part of April, because we'll need to get all the input that we need, so.
I'm concerned that this moving forward quickly, I don't want to see it drag out.
Correct.
Unfortunately for us, we're now two months already without doing it.
So we'll move it as quick as we can. I'm actually already starting on your community profile piece so that we can just kind of pluck into place once we know more.
You'll also do the vetting of the candidates once we hire them, background check, more than what we currently do?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll do a thorough background check.
Thank you.
We also do social media checks, traffic checks, things like that as well.
Additional questions? Mayor Protam Dillon?
Thank you. I served on the Hiring Committee for the previous city manager. There is a community profile that was already created, so I think that you're not starting from the bottom, and you can talk to the HR Director about that. She has that, as well as some other documentation, I think. My big question is that it looks like this is going to be, we're soliciting candidates from outside of Michigan because there is line items for travel and accommodations and such. Do we have any idea what that's going to look like and cost? And obviously, you don't know what kind of candidates. In past searches, are you seeing an influx of out-of-state candidates?
Well, we're not only just out-of-state, but if you live on the west side of the state, it's a three-hour drive. So depending on what time your interviews are will also depend on if they need some travel expenses for a hotel. It's typically one or two nights, depending on the process that we come up with. So once we know what that looks like, it'll be more, it'll be more in alignment once we know what that looks like. I think we're having, still, I would say 75% of our candidates are coming in from Michigan, but there are quite a few that we're starting to see from Wisconsin and Illinois Ohio area as well. And then, of course, you have to remember, there's always those folks that have left the area after college and they want to come back to their hometowns. We're seeing a lot of that as well. Their parents are aging and things of that nature. And with you guys being in Washtenaw County and near Ann Arbor, I could see a lot more of that, especially with U of M grads wanting to come back home.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that we keep that number in perspective of the cost. And then my other question is regarding costs, but it would probably be an internal one for Acting City Manager. It does say on the memo that amendment is required, so is there not, we have a budget line item, but is there not money for this item?
The search obviously was not planned upon, so it was not part of the original budget. However, it will be for the budget now. I heard it's approved today.
Thank you very much.
Any additional questions or comments from the dais? April, I think you'd like to add?
No, we're very excited to get started, and we will do the best we can to truncate that process and get ahead of the game as soon as we can.
Assuming the motion passes, probably either myself or HR Director will follow up with you tomorrow. We do have some documents that Mayor Protam Dillon made reference to that we want to share with you. I want to get that information out to the Hiring Committee, along with an agenda, and plan accordingly for our next regular meeting on the 13th. Okay, very good. If there's no additional discussion on the motion, we do have a motion on the floor moved by Lesch, seconded by Seo, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. April, thank you very much. Look forward to working with you. We move on to new business item 25-44, Sanitary Storm Sewer CCTV Lining As-Needed Contract. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt, to approve or not to approve, an as-needed contract with SAC Construction LLC for CCTV and lining of the city of Saline Sanitary Storm Sewer Infrastructure, utilizing a cooperative purchase agreement through the city of Livonia for a three-year contract with two-year options for renewal and a not-to-exceed amount of $300,000.
Good evening, sir.
I need a motion. Sorry, folks.
I'll move to approve.
Are you acknowledging and approving?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second to that? Is that seconded by Seo?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. You're enthusiastic. We like that. Why don't, before you dive into the substance of the motion, do you want to take maybe 30 seconds to introduce yourself? Because I believe this is your first official council meeting.
Yes.
And we are obviously delighted to have you onboard, but I think the public would benefit from learning a little bit more about your background and priorities as our new DPW Director.
Yeah, thank you. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Zach Hopla. As the mayor mentioned, I am your new Public Works Director. Previously, I worked for an engineering firm called DLZ, where we actually served as the engineers of record for numerous municipalities over in Oakley County primarily. While I was there, most recently, I served a part of the city engineer position within the city of Pontiac. I've also previously worked for the city of Troy's DPW. Additionally, I also had my master's in my public administration. I've been certified through the Asset Management Committee through the state of Michigan. So really, utilities, future projections, capital improvement projects, operations, that's really my bread and butter, so I'm excited to be here.
Good. Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
So, on to item 25-44. I'd also like to present on 25-48 as well, if that is allowed. They both pertain to the exact same capital improvement project, which was approved for the fiscal year 25 capital improvement budget.
I'll allow that. I would ask that council members reserve their questions regarding agenda item 25-48 until we get to that actual item, because we have an item that was just removed just this evening from the consent agenda that we'll take up before we get to that action item. But you may proceed.
Thank you. Yeah, so as the item lists, we've, we're looking for improvement for sanitary and storm sewer CCTV footage, pipe rating, and then as-needed lining services for both our storm sewer and our sanitary sewer. For the fiscal year 25 capital improvement budget, it was approved that $150,000 would be used for sanitary sewer, $150,000 for storm sewer. So we are proceeding with utilizing a cooperative agreement with the city of Livonia to utilize SAC's services. So there has already been established line item pricing with them. I have worked with them in the past. This would allow us to actually start work this fiscal year and get that entire $300,000 expended. Additionally, we are looking to have OHM Advisors, one of our as-needed engineering consulting firms, provide construction administration services and oversee those lining processes, review the PACP ratings that come back from the CCTV footage, and integrate that all into our GIS system that they actually house for the city.
Very good. Are there questions for our DPW Director regarding agenda item 25-44? No? Mr. Girbaugh?
As I was looking back at the memo, it talks about in 2019, the city of Saline, you know, created the 2019 Asset Management Plan with Tetra Tech. Has this been revised since we've been really looking at the asset management plan and making sure we're working off of 2025 ideas?
Yeah, so I appreciate that question. So as far as what was put together in 2019, the city has been diligently looking at how to best address those problems with both our utilities and our road projects, right? So we want to implement a dig-and-once mentality. So if we are going to be doing any work in the road, we want to ensure that the utilities are not going to need work within five years and now we're redigging up that road. So we have done some lining in the previous years, however, we have not addressed some of the more serious locations. So as part of the packet, there are areas that were identified by Tetra Tech in blue for locations that are to be lined and that they recommended. So again, the lining procedure will allow for no infiltration to get in because now there is no joints. It's actually a cured-in-place lining that goes with inside the inner diameter of the pipe and actually restores the structural integrity as well, extending that life for about 80 years. Again, that's trenchless, so they are just entering through one manhole, coming out the other manhole. But this is to allow us to really start tackling a lot of these areas that were identified. But additionally, we only had CCTV footage on a number of pipe segments in the city, so this will also allow us to continue televising the sewers, rating them, and implementing that into our fluid capital improvement program as we move forward.
And this won't be as invasive as we did when we did the lining for the water line, since this is for a sewer line?
No, sir. Yes, with the water main, you, every time that pipe may deflect, you've got fittings. You may have a 45-degree bend where you now have to cut a square around that hole, and now that's your new entry point and a new exit point for the sewer lining. We can actually just utilize all the manholes and just pop the lid, drop their equipment down, so there's no real digging that actually occurs.
And will they be evaluating the connections that come into the sewer line from either homes or residents or commercial businesses as you look in there? Because I think there are some areas where that's failed, either going into the manhole cover or into, I mean, the manhole catch base.
Through the CCTV footage, right? So even areas that have already had footage go through, already had ratings provided, prior to lining, they do send, they do send a robot through with televising to see if they need to actually clean the pipe, but also get an infrared laser to establish the exact inner diameter for the cured-in-place material. When they are doing that, we will look for any deformities that may not have been identified previously. And so what we'll be able to see is that any of those Y connections where those sewer leads actually enter into the main, you will be able to see at that juncture if there is an issue, and that is our responsibility as a city for that Y. Anything past that Y is on the homeowner or the property owner to maintain that. So we will not be going up any of those leads to identify any further issues, just the main.
If there is damage, we may have to dig up in that location and repair it? If there is damage where it's determined where the joint is in, then we will dig up and fix it?
Potentially, potentially, yes.
I just want to make sure, because I know, I'm aware of some of those issues and people have concerns, even on North Ann Arbor Street and other streets, but where we're doing this is fine.
Yes.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Mr. Seo?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Hopla, how do they accommodate these sewer lines for places where a lead comes in? If they're lining the main line, how do they adapt?
Yeah, fantastic question. So they've actually got some phenomenal technology for that. When they send that initial robot through, so they are actually tracking the footage as they're going through that pipe. So they are documenting at each location. So when they send that liner through, there's actually a magnet on the other side. So after that liner has been placed, they will send another robot through with basically a drill bit, right? And so it will actually tack on to where that metal detector is on the backside of it, and it will actually screw a hole in and pull out the plug for that sewer lead, and then they'll actually clean up the edges of that and then retract that out and keep going back through the process. So it's pretty, it's pretty cool technology, if I want to say that. So, yeah, that's how they'll tackle it.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Mayor Protam Dillon?
Thank you. And thank you to Director Hopla, because he answered most of my questions earlier today, trying to understand whether we were paying for review or actual lining, and so it's a bit of both. I guess my big question for you is sort of timing as to what do you anticipate the process to be for this step and then moving forward over the next couple of years? Will we be done in three years, or is this a lifelong project?
So, that's a fantastic question and one that we're definitely in the infancy of identifying. So right now, obviously, with our capital improvement plan, we have numerous locations that were identified as eligible for lining. It is my priority to tackle those first and foremost, but also starting to schedule out over the next few fiscal years, trying to integrate in that CCTV and improving our rating system as a city and as a whole. And so there will be a number of things that we'll find, especially with that CCTV footage as well, right? There will be instances where you may have a total collapse in locations or at a bell joint, things are so dislodged that lining is not an option, and we will have to actually open cut and do physical digging to actually replace that main. So there will be an ongoing discussion, and this will be extremely fluid, right? We'll have some years where really we're just going to want to focus on data collection to keep costs down, and then we'll have other years where we'll need to ramp things up to really focus on the repairs.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Additional questions? Councilmember Harmout?
Sorry, I didn't get this question to you before. I just was thinking about it. What's the warranty of this?
So that is a fantastic question, and that is buried in the RFP with the city of Livonia. I would have to look into that, and I can absolutely get back to you with that information.
What you're asking, can you ask what it includes, what it doesn't, what it would exclude, and does the start date of the warranty upon the installation? Is that when it starts?
Yeah, yeah. So their warranty would be upon installation, and I do know that warranty would cover any deformities with that sewer lining, right? So if there's any protrusions coming in, any infiltration from groundwater, any of those types of abnormalities that the lining itself should be protecting against, then obviously that would be covered under warranty. Now, if some natural force or some damages occurred externally that creates a collaption of that pipe, right? Like now, we're going to start looking into if that's covered or not, but those will be some of the circumstances.
Yeah, so the duration of warranty would be, thanks.
We'll make sure the DPW director follows up and provides you that information. Councilmember Harmout, thank you for that. Additional questions from the dais? Is there any discussion on the motion that's been properly moved by Gierbaugh, seconded by CEO, to acknowledge receipt and to approve? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to business item 25-47, creation of joint committee between Saline Area Schools and the city of Saline. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of Mayor Morrow's letter and to approve the creation of a joint committee between Saline Area Schools and the city of Saline and to appoint the representatives as submitted.
Move to acknowledge.
You want to be the second to that, Mr. Lush?
Sure.
Okay, so it's moved by Gierbaugh to acknowledge, seconded by Lush. Acting City Manager Cole, would you like to begin, and then I can add anything that I guess is left out?
Thank you so much, Mayor Morrow. So the creation of this joint committee with Saline Area Schools is one of the more exciting items tonight that we have, a formal creation of a joint committee where Saline Area Schools and the city of Saline can collaborate together. The collaboration really is going to allow us to align our shared priorities, create deficiencies between different programs that we have, allow for a great discussion and support with our rec center collaboration and what we can do with our rec center to better serve both our youth and our families and maximize, hopefully, our resources while we're doing it. I think this is a great step forward in our community partnership.
Very good. Other questions from the dais? Mr. Gierbaugh?
Yeah, as we create committees and some of the things, I look at this, and there's some statements that are about for years to come. I believe that all committees, as we start creating new ones, should have a period of time in which they only exist for two to three and then renew, make sure that they're actually being effective and clear. We've done that with one previously. So at this point, that would be one of my concerns on it. Also, will there be some type of bylaws when we start doing cooperative agreements or type of situation, these committees with outside entities, understanding the roles, responsibilities, and what's going to be coming out of this would be helpful? Seemed a little bit more ambiguous as what exactly was going to happen, and then you just had mentioned a couple of the issues tonight, so I appreciate that. Also, how will this report regularly to council to understand what's being discussed? Often, there's a number of items that I think the city ends up becoming responsible for that I hope that this group will be able to discuss, such as the new planned athletic fields and some of the other concerns that you have mentioned. And then the other thing, exactly who will be appointed from the school board side? Will it include the individuals that are residents within our own community, which was what I would prefer, because there are a number on the school board that have both dual responsibilities to the school board and as being a citizen in our community would be part of that too. That way, we preserve a little bit more of our expectation for committees in terms of residency requirements that were just reapproved per charter.
And we will make sure to designate all of the bylaws. We'll also make sure to kind of designate some of our major topics or areas of concern and get with you on how many times we're going to be bringing the report and action items from this meeting group to council.
And obviously, we're not, we can recommend, we can encourage the appointment of certain individuals, but that's done at the discretion of the school board. Based on a conversation that Acting City Manager Cole and I had with Superintendent Latch and School Board President McBay, my understanding is that their appointments would be a combination of staff and school board members, similar to how we've configured this group. We think it's important to have people who have some operational discretion along with those who help to enact policy. And while the memo does not specifically state a sunset, it is clear, if you read the memo, that these appointments are good for a one-year period and will be considered as part of our normal boarding commission appointment process in January of 2026. And so if the group is deemed not to be effective or necessary, certainly this body and the school board can make whatever change they deem appropriate. Councilmember Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been a huge proponent of this since I've joined council. I've met with the school superintendent and other staff and really encouraged this, so I'm really encouraged that this is going forward. I like that we have buy-in from the schools and from my colleagues here. I do echo my colleague, Mr. Gierbaugh, when I say that I would strongly prefer that the two board members be taxpayers within the city of Saline so that we can focus on financial issues from the perspective of the constituents of the city and those who live in the city. Now, the staff and the school board also take into account the residents of all of the other communities as well, which I appreciate, but I think when we're talking about finances and this joint committee, we're really looking at how taxpayer dollars are being spent within the city of Saline, and that's kind of been the focus over the last few years and the conversations that I've had between my colleagues. But again, I fully support this. I would love to see bylaws. I echo everything my colleague, Mr. Gierbaugh, said, and I think that by having this committee, you know, some of these conversations that we've had sort of separately and said, yes, we're going to do this, or, you know, we have a better ability to sit down and really work some of these things out in a more formal manner. So I really like to see this get going.
Very good. I appreciate that comment, and when Acting City Manager Cole and I follow up with School Board President McBay and Superintendent Latch tomorrow, assuming this motion passes, we can certainly convey that it is our hope that members representing Saline Area Schools do have direct buy-in and/or are residents of the city of Saline. Mayor Potem Dillon?
Thank you. Just for clarification, who is the point of contact for the city on this committee?
That would be me.
Okay. Just making sure, because my name was listed first. I was doing the not it. Okay, so, thank you. And Mayor, as the alternate, will you be attending meetings or just only in the absence of others?
No, we generally define alternate as a participant when one of the regular members cannot attend.
Okay. So then I guess my question is, would it be at this point, should somebody from the committee start the conversations going forward?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
You're saying that you are having a conversation tomorrow with the schools?
No, I'm just, I'm following up with them via email to confirm that this group has been established and approved, that L will be the point of contact for the time being, and that is based on the comments that were made today, that it is our hope that some of the representatives or all of the representatives from Saline Area Schools have direct buy-in and/or be residents of the city of Saline.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Are there additional comments or questions? Councilmember Harmout?
I would like to say thank you for, I'm looking forward to the opportunity to serve on the subcommittee. I think the collaboration with the school district is very important as a parent of a child in the school district, so I think there's a lot of opportunity. I do agree with my fellow council members that defining the scope kind of out the gate is going to be important. I don't think we should, I think we should agree establishing the subcommittee, but along with that, we really do need to have that established expectation upfront.
Good. Any additional questions, comments? Mr. Gierbaugh?
Well, I did read the memo, and in terms, it talks about appointments ending for the individuals can be renewed. I'm talking about the life of the committee, and perhaps it should correspond with the mayoral responsibility. So I would look at trying to have this reviewed at the end of 2020, what is it, two years from now? 2027? Because the new mayor would take, 2026, my apologies.
Any additional comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion simply to acknowledge receipt that was moved by Gierbaugh, seconded by Lush. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion out to approve?
Some.
Moved by Rice. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by CEO. Is there any additional discussion? All those in favor approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 25-48, OHM scope and construction administration services. As was previously discussed and messaged upon by the DPW director, this will be a motion to acknowledge receipt and to approve or not to approve the OHM scope and construction administration services in an amount of $25,500.
To acknowledge and approve.
Moved by CEO to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Harmout. DPW Director Hopala, do you have any additional comments at this time?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Are there any questions for our DPW director? Mayor Potem Dillon?
Thank you. Just understanding, what role do our internal staff engineers play? Are they providing any support to this? Are they reviewing documentation? Just understanding what their role is.
Yeah, absolutely. So there's a lot of day-to-day operations that occur with this, right? So it's a pretty dynamic relationship that DPW maintains with our engineering department and our engineering consultant, right? So as you look at OHM's proposal, the vast majority of their scope is actually in Task 2, labeled construction services, and so for that amount, they are actually providing the onsite inspection and preparing the pay estimates, being out there with the contractor, ensuring that what the contractor is submitting to us for payment is accurate. They're also reviewing a lot of that PACP, that pipeline assessment data from those CCTV footages, and integrating that into our GIS system that OHM actually houses for the city. It's an extensive software cloud-based program, extremely expensive to maintain. You also have GIS professionals that are spinning up each individual map, maintaining the symbology. So for us, our engineers are really understanding the dynamics of our own distribution systems, ensuring that the engineering consultant themselves knows exactly what our deliverables are. They are first and foremost ensuring that our capital improvement plan is what is in our forefront, right? So they are overseeing our road projects as well. They're overseeing other water main and sanitary sewer replacement projects. So obviously, our consultant is giving us recommendations, but at the end of the day, DPW and primarily myself is really relying on my in-house engineers to advocate for the best direction and best path forward, right? In most instances, our engineering consultants will provide us with multiple different options, but I'm relying on our in-house professionals to recommend the best decision moving forward.
Thank you very much for that. That's what I was trying to figure out, is their input. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Councilmember Rice?
Speaking of our GIS system being hosted with OHM, what is your professional opinion on having a consulting service basically running that, housing that for us versus a size of our town having that capability in-house with staff and the equipment?
Fantastic question. So I'm extremely familiar with the GIS system, right? Given our size of a municipality, given how much infrastructure we have and our role in it on a day-to-day basis, I don't believe it to be prudent to bring that in-house, right? Given our own IT staff, we would need to have two GIS individuals brought on staff. You would need an administrator and a technician, so someone to actually build that network up, maintain it, oversee it overnight, and then a technician to kind of enter in all of the data from a day-to-day basis. And the cost and the bandwidth for our network to take that on versus the cost for the consultant to oversee that as they do for a number of municipalities. Again, given our size, I believe it's in our best interest to maintain the path that we have with OHM.
Thank you very much.
Additional questions? Mr. Gierbaugh?
Just a comment, and I appreciate your information, because we had talked earlier about the engineering services and the roles of everyone. I think it would be helpful to understand what your plan and vision will be moving forward as some of the options and things that we took under our umbrella in terms of how we were going to use engineering services were from the previous city manager and your predecessor. And so I believe there's probably a whole aspect to be reviewed there because of how we were spending a significant amount of money for outsourcing and then understanding, and as you just explained, hopefully, understanding better how that improves, and I appreciate your assessment so far, but I know you've just been here a few weeks, so I expect to see what you will do going forward. Thank you.
Any additional comments or discussion on the motion? If there's no additional debate, we do have a motion on the floor moved by CEO, seconded by Harmout, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 25-45, application for special land use for 450 East Michigan Ave., Suite 3. And my apologies, the motion got cut off on my agenda. Would you be so kind, Clerk Royal, as to read it for the public's benefit?
To approve or not approve with conditions, the special land use at 450 East Michigan Avenue, Suite 3, East Lane, Michigan, 48176, parcel number 18213136004, with the following conditions. One, worship service days and hours limited to Fridays from 6:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. and Sundays from 11 a.m. to 3 p.m.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve or not to approve?
Move to acknowledge.
Moved by Mayor Potem Dillon to acknowledge. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Rice. Community Development Director Adkin, I'm going to start with you, and then upon the conclusion of your remarks, I'll transition to Mr. Gierbaugh, Councilmember Gierbaugh, excuse me, who can speak to this matter as our representative from the planning commission.
Thank you. This went in front of the planning commission late last month. The parcel in question is in the SPA 1 zone, which allows for a lot of mixed-use types, and under Section 11A04, certain uses, permitted uses, and other districts are permitted uses in the SPA 1, 1 being churches and locations for religious worship that are permitted by special use in the R1 zoning district, which subsequently would fall as a special use in this area also. So the applicant is looking to use a 1,800-square-foot portion of this building. It's three separate suites right now. This would be the furthest one south off of Michigan Ave. Sidebar is, this will also be used as a coffee shop most of the time, which is not part of the church. The worship area is only going to be, as clerk said, two days a week for a couple hours a day, whereas other hours, except for daybreaks on Saturday, will be utilized as a coffee shop. The planning commission did recommend approval with condition, there was two conditions they had. One was to get established occupancy load, which was set at 55. With that, when the parking was in question, they required 18 parking spaces, and the existing parking lot has 29 available spaces, the 2 ADA spaces available. They meet all the other requirements as outlined in the ordinance for special land use for this type of use. There's no, other than the sign, there's no proposed outside changes to the building, and floor plans are submitted for your review as well. Fire chief has been through the building to do the initial review, only for the coffee shop, which I want to reiterate, that is not part of this review, just for some content. And so that was the part of the first condition that was put in, fire department, building inspector, and occupancy load. And so at this time, recommend approval with the condition that they only operate the services for those times.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Adkin. Councilmember Gierbaugh, anything you'd like to add as the representative to the planning commission?
The planning commission didn't have a lot of discussion about this. The only concerns did come up was with the parking, because potentially, if there was to be other services on other days, it can conflict with other operations that could be used at this commercial property. The one concern was raised about how tables and chairs would be in there and the fire issue and concern, but now that we understand that Fire Chief has reviewed that, that concern is differently. Of course, this property is part of the area that we, as a council, had talked about potentially becoming a section of a rehabilitation district, should that move forward. This does not impact that. It's being leased at this time. It's not being purchased or bought. That would make a big impact on it for the, from the council, I mean, from the planning commission's perspective, it was to move forward. There was a concern that should parking become an issue, that may fall underneath, that will fall underneath code enforcement, such in the event that cars and such become a problem during the services or whatever.
And if I'm not mistaken, the motion was approved unanimously by the planning commission at their most recent meeting. Is that correct?
Correct.
Very good. Are there questions for either, I could address some questions as a representative on planning commission. Certainly, Mr. Gierbaugh could, but most of our questions are probably best directed to Director Adkin. Mr. CEO, would you like to begin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Exactly which building is 450 East Michigan Ave?
Former here on camera behind the old Pizza Hut.
Oh, great. Huntington Bank was there.
Huntington Bank was there most recently. I guess I yearn with nostalgia for the Pizza Hut.
Do I have to remove any partitions between these suites?
No, they're existing.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Councilmember Rice?
Yeah, so my biggest concern was the fact that we've had retail and we've been bringing in taxes. And so I asked the city manager what the estimate tax loss per year was, and her number was $7,500 a year. So I wanted to say that. So I wanted to say that out loud to the community and to my council colleagues as we make this decision.
Good.
Let me ask on that.
Please.
Is that, I thought this was still being leased. Are they asking for an exemption? If it's leased, I didn't think, I was going to ask Jacob that unless that had been clarified.
Can you follow up on that? I don't want to take a guess on that answer.
My hunch would be there would be no loss in revenue, but please confirm that.
I didn't realize it was leased.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Mayor Protem Dillon?
Thank you. That was definitely one of my questions. So just as an understanding, are they taking over the entire building or one section of it?
Just one section. It's, there's three sections in there, the largest being that fronts Michigan Ave. The middle one.
Very small.
This is, yeah. I don't have the square footage on that, and this one's 1,800 square feet, and that includes bathroom, office, and the coffee bar area.
Okay. So you said that that space is entitled to 18 parking spots, and then there's 29 total for the property?
Correct.
So are we just expecting that every person is going to come with a buddy to church?
That's based on one parking space per, I think it was three, one space per three of the occupancy. And it was the same for the coffee shop.
Okay.
And that's also an assumption that it's going to be at capacity.
Okay. And they are not utilizing the drive-through at all? The free getting drive-through?
It's ATM.
Okay.
Drive-throughs out there. And then there was some discussion about if it came down to there wasn't enough parking, if it became an issue, having that removed, that would be up to the owner of the property. I don't know if he's looking, actively looking to put another financial institution in there that would utilize the ATM, but there's probably room for three more parking spaces in that area, possibly six.
I was going to say, that's a really big outbuilding, so I would think more than three.
You take out the drive-through, the building, you could possibly put six more parallel or perpendicular spaces out there.
Okay. And then as far as the coffee shop goes, are those, so is it separate entities? There's a church and a coffee shop. So will the coffee shop have its own hours? It's open to the public?
Yes.
And it has nothing to do with the church? Like if I went in to go in, we're not going to?
My understanding is they're completely separate, yes.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then just understanding the special use, it goes with the business, not with the property?
It goes with the property.
Okay.
There, after so long, it's possible that that special use could be revoked under certain conditions.
So that's what I'm trying to understand. So if at some point that area became rezoned and was no longer an SPA, or SPA was reclassified, would this always have an exemption on this property?
If there's a change of use in between those times, generally, once there's a change in use or it ceases operation for a period of time, then special use will go away.
Is there anything that we can do other than special use? Or is there ways to put parameters onto the special use? I mean, what I don't want to see is something in perpetuity that we're making a decision today that we're going to live with forever.
Council is permitted to put restrictions on it that are reasonable, say only give, applying a condition of a sunset date on this after a certain time period. I don't think you can legally do. That's why with the, if there is a change of use in that particular structure, we're not talking the whole building, that's why the motion is specific to Suite 3. If there's a change in use or it ceases operation for a certain period of time, then it'll through attrition natural.
Right.
Attrition will cease.
And, right. I guess I want to be very clear that I don't oppose churches. I just don't think that this is necessarily the most advantageous place to have a church, especially long-term, and so I'd like to make sure that the city has options moving forward.
Conditional use or special land use permits, there are some gray areas, and there are legal gray areas that I don't want to make any presumptions on. That's, again, once there's a change in use, then that special use would cease. Approval would cease.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Before we vote on a motion to acknowledge receipt, Councilmember Rice?
I guess we'll probably need to vote on this first, but I think I would like to move this to a date set so we can get some of these financial questions answered.
So once we, excuse me, entertain and vote upon the motion to acknowledge receipt, the chair would be happy to entertain a motion to postpone table, approve, or to reject, assuming that the motion is appropriately worded and has a second. Any additional discussion on the motion to acknowledge receipt? Mr. Adkin, anything you'd like to add?
No.
Easy enough. We have a motion on the floor then moved by Dillon, seconded by Rice, simply to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to approve, not to approve, postponed to a date certain, or table?
I would like to move to postpone to a date certain, being our next council meeting on March the 17th.
I think it would be helpful, Councilmember Rice, if you also state in the motion the genesis or purpose for postponement. So is it to get clarification from legal counsel on what some of our options are to restrict and appropriately regulate this forthcoming enterprise?
Yes, it's to get clarification from legal counsel on some of our restrictions moving forward into the future.
Okay. Let me start with Clerk Royal. Clerk Royal, are you clear on the motion?
I have to postpone to March 17th for clarification from legal counsel on, on future restrictions of the special use in the future. Oh, that's redundant, sorry.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Dillon. Let me ask Mr. Adkin and Acting City Manager Cole, is two weeks a sufficient time to get clarification from legal counsel? Okay, very good. Is there any subsequent discussion on the motion? Okay, we have a motion to postpone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll reconsider this as a unfinished business item on March the 17th. We move on to new business item 25-46, Saline Area Fire Department approval, approval and adoption of budget. As I indicated via email today, I'm going to make a motion to acknowledge the memorandum and to postpone to a date certain of March the 17th, 2025. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Rice. I spoke to the Acting City Manager regarding this matter today. I also spoke to Councilmember Lesh. Most importantly, I spoke to Lori Champion, who is our liaison, one of our two liaisons to the Fire Board. She's also led the risk mitigation initiative for the Saline Area Fire Department over the past year. I have asked for her to put in writing her thoughts on the proposed budget. She said she would do so, and she would also plan to be in attendance on March the 17th to address any questions or concerns that council members may have. I also learned from the city manager today that there may be one or two council members who have some additional questions or points of clarification that would best be directed, excuse me, to either our staff or to the Fire Chief. So if you have those, please email them or communicate them to the city manager so that she can disseminate them to the Fire Department or to our Finance Department. Any question or discussion on the motion? Then we have a motion on the floor moved by Marl, seconded by Rice, to postpone to date certain of March the 17th, 2025. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Ayes have it, the motion carries six to one. And again, Clerk Royal, this should be listed as a unfinished business item at the top of our agenda in two weeks' time. We'll transition now to reports and other announcements. I'll begin this evening to my right and then to my left. But actually, I want to begin to my far left with Acting City Manager Cole, because she asked for a little bit of time, and I think she's going to call upon Mr. Briggs and maybe some additional staff we have from Water, Wastewater. So my apologies, Acting City Manager Cole, I will turn it over to you if you want to provide some obligatory opening remarks, and then turn it over to our wastewater treatment superintendent.
Yes, absolutely. Tonight, I have the absolute pleasure of introducing something really special. Thanks to our creative talents of our own IT staff, who took to the skies with a drone over PCF renovation site, and the masterful storytelling of our public relations journalist, Sarah Massey, we're thrilled to unveil a brand-new video capturing the incredible transformation underway. This is not just a flyover, it's front row seats to progress innovation in the future of our operations. I would love to invite Superintendent Briggs to come up, and, excuse me, Deputy Superintendent Craig Anderson, please come on up. And they're just going to serve, in case you have any questions, after we see the video.
Very good. Mr. Briggs, Mr. Anderson, thank you for your time and your patience this evening. Make sure the green light is illuminated at the base of that microphone bill, and pull it a little bit close to you, and you may begin when ready.
Go ahead and play the video, Ben.
Coming toward the wastewater site from a northwesterly direction, spot where construction trailers are currently at approximately where the wet storage tank will be located. You can see on the left the construction of the walls with the three aeration ditches and the pump building. You can see the three long chambers and the shorter foam tiles of the pump building, where the pumps will circulate to the first stage of the treated material. This will also have some screw press for processing sludge into tankware. The white half round items are the old RV2 treatment units that will be removed from the construction to your location. The two yellow items are steel angle curving units and the various fire hydrants we developed. The large metal dirt will be gone at the end of the project, having been used for backfill around many of the structures. The two excavators are in spot with a new primary tank we've located. The scaffolding rack of plastic is where basements are building block walls for a new headworks building. The current headworks building, which is adjacent, will be demolished after the new headworks go online. The existing acid building with the cheap crew and buildings attached to it will remain with some interior remodeling for bathrooms and will contain UU dissection. The next blue building is where the final filters are operated. This will remain in its place. Beyond that is a flat flush storage tank, which will remain in use. And as the drone does, you can see the round digesters and the digester building where sludge is pumped from the bottoms of the primaries and the secondary to the digester. The round tank, you can see the gate, is slated for removal as the sludge will last.
So I'd like to thank Sarah Massey for her abilities in narrating that, and Chris for flying the drone so we can get those good pictures so you guys could have an idea what's going on. It's kind of hard to see what's going on there unless you get that bird's eye view thing, so.
Very cool. Mr. Anderson, anything you'd like to add?
Not at this time.
I think it's a, I think the video is very well done, very informative, and clear and succinct, which is what I like. I'm assuming it'll be disseminated on social media and put on the city's website?
Correct. It's already on YouTube, and I believe Sarah's got it on the front page of the under, I'm not sure what it's under on the front page of the website.
It's on the very front homepage.
Has there been any thought, is in six months' time, 12 months' time, will we produce another video? What's the thought process there, or is there a thought process there?
Certainly, we'll be updating this. We could probably do it more frequently than that, because things are changing rather rapidly. Where the scaffolding is for the block walls for the new headworks, those have all changed and are starting on different walls, so it's, it's a thing that's going to happen. I mean, it seems to be slow, but if you took another flyover in a couple of months, it'd be a big difference.
Okay, very good. Excellent. Let me start to my, to my right. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So the other day when we were working on our capital improvement plan, I had some updates to offer for things that have been going on with the project that you might not be aware of. So we've had some items that we realized that were omitted in the first drawings, so I'd just like to bring those to your attention. The old odor scrubber, the new utility building. When we first did this project, I was on the assumption that that building was going to come down, and it's not. We're repurposing it for the del pack, the chemical that we use. So that building needs new heaters, and I started that process back in October. I don't know if you remember or not, council approved new heaters for that building, so that was one of the things that got left out. Also, at the end of the sludge storage tank, there are decant valves. Right now, we're decanting by dropping pumps in and pumping liquid out with some pumps, basically hoses over the top. The tank's supposed to be set up with valves at certain levels that you can decant with, and those have been out of use for quite some time. So we're going to probably do that ourselves. We can do it with current staffing. We definitely have the skills and the ability, so it's just a matter of timing, doing that when the tanks are in process of sludge hauling when they're empty, so we can take those valves out and replace them with new ones. We would have liked to have piping that went from the new lift station, which is going to be up around the corner of the.
Now, with the aeration basin?
Yeah, the aeration basin. So that, that's so we can pump empty tanks, we can drain tanks to that and pump them somewhere. We would have liked to have had them pumped to the wet storage tank, but they're not. It's going to have to be something that then goes to the primary again, and then we try and co-settle that with the primaries sludge. So it's a little bit more difficult. The wild pump that was put in a few years ago, has proven to be not as effective as we'd like, and we didn't get a positive displacement pump to replace that, but I think we can do that in subsequent years when the plant's done, we can get that done. It's not going to be a real expensive idea. And we would have liked to have the upgrade to the scum pumping, because right now it's basically a gravity system. We would have liked to have had a direct pumping system instead. Again, that's probably something we can work on. And then a line from wasting to digester, to the digester, in case the thickener goes down. We've got a new wasting tank that biosods are going to go to, and they're either going to be pumped from there to the, the idea is to pump them through the, yeah, through the thickener, screw press thickener. But if that goes down, we won't be able to do that, so we're missing a pipe that goes back to be able to pump that to the digesters instead. And the only other thing we didn't really think about was new lighting in the basement. This guy's been down there, but it's pretty dim, so we're going to have to work that in somehow, too. So if you want to talk about things that weren't right?
Sure.
Things that have went right? We had a bypass of the plant approximately five months ago.
You mean to be closer to the microphone?
We bypassed the plant pumping for tying up a 48-inch line going into the new headworks building. Went off without a hitch, so that was a good thing. Demolition of old unused filter press. Any of you that have been down there, that big back room that looked like a big anvil sitting on the floor in there, that's all been removed, it's gone, that went smooth. Last week, we had the transformer for our flood pump that was in the basement moved to the first floor. Demo of the trickling filters and the old trickling filter building pumping system, all been removed with no problems, are upset to the plant. Stormwater to tie into the headworks of the plant, we had a storm drain that was a concern if we ever had an SSO, it went straight to the river. We have eliminated that. It goes directly to the head of the plant now, so any future SSOs will be contained on site. Flow spreading structure, construction to existing secondary tanks. The old one was all basically a tank with two chambers and two-by-tens for bathrooms. We have a new one now that'll go in when they bring the new plant online, and that'll have actual valves, or gate valves.
Gate valves.
So we can adjust flow instead of removing a board, we can just turn a panel. First floor lighting went great. Took a little longer than I thought it should have, but we have all new lights and eliminated a lot of lights. We had a air compressor in the basement that was part of the old press system that's been removed and demolished. That went off without a hitch. And pile drivings at the front of the plant went great, the back of the plant, they're going well, but we have some concerns from residents, so.
That did finish today on a pile drive. And I'll briefly touch on things that really didn't go very well, some of which you're probably aware of already. The lagoon closure has been an issue. That's actually ongoing. It still cannot be closed until they get the aeration tanks in, backfill in, and then we're going to have to drill two new wells for sampling, because we don't have enough, I think we have to have six samples to clear it, and we only got three or four, so unfortunately. They did replace the roof on the admin building, both the peaked and the flat. Downside is the flat leaks in a couple of spots yet, so they're still working on that. We discovered that with the snow melt here in the last few days. The del pack delivers at the beginning of our challenge because of the construction. We actually have.
We actually had to pump up over the hill for the truck down at the bottom by the admin building one time. But we managed to get it done. It was just kind of a rear-end pain. And of course, along with the lagoon closure goes the PFOS contamination of soil removal and the delays caused by that. With the pile driving, of course, was a vibration for the residents behind wastewater plant. We have had some complaints. We're trying to deal with them as best we can. And the only other downside that kind of delayed a little bit was they probably should have done a better job of de-watering groundwater down when they started digging stuff down around the low spot because that's a low spot and water comes from everywhere. So but other than that, like I say, I'd finish on a low note, but.
No, I particularly appreciate your remarks, Mr. Briggs and Mr. Anderson, about the successes thus far with the project. I think it's human nature, I've said this ad nauseam over the past 16 months, but we tend to focus a lot on the negative. And that's not to say we don't have deficiencies and issues we are attempting to resolve, but we have far more successes than failures. And I think it's important to take time to note those and to make sure that our constituents, the residents of the Celine community are aware of them. Thank you. Acting City Manager Cole, anything you'd like to add before we open it up for questions for these gentlemen?
I would like to thank Bill and Craig so much for coming in this evening and talking about the wastewater treatment plant renovation. And we should look forward to seeing them more on a regular basis so we can get regular updates on what's happening with the biggest project that we've had here in the city of Celine.
Very good. Gentlemen, hang tight just for a few minutes because there might be some questions that are worth addressing this evening. Again, I'm going to start to my right and to my left. If you'd exercise some brevity, the chair would appreciate that. Mr. Lash, any question for our guests this evening?
Nothing.
Councilmember CO?
Nothing.
Mayor Potem Dillon?
Thank you very much for coming. It's great to see the progress there. I don't think people realize that the only comment I have is that there's been two downsides recently. One, which Mr. Briggs, Acting City Manager, and myself went to visit a resident who had some vibration issues. And I think we underestimated what that vibration feeling and noise was going to be like. I think we could have done a, moving forward, we will know better, that I think it does have a bigger impact than we thought it would. But we've worked through that and I think they're done now.
Yes, sir. They're done with the pile driving. The only vibrations they'll have at this point is when they remove those piles and it'll be much less intense.
No, I appreciate that.
Add some compaction, too, as they do backfill.
So I appreciate that. The other thing is that we've had some periodic episodes of odor that are we going to, is that going to become an issue as the weather starts to change, should people be more aware of it?
It probably will. We've got the rocket ship odor scrubber, that's the only best way to describe which one I'm talking about. It has some broken pipes on it. We're going to work on fixing those this week. And so that's not operating as nearly as well as we should. So hopefully by the end of this week or very soon, we'll have that corrected. We've decided to go away from the original heat trace to keep that stuff from freezing. We're going to figure out how to build some type of structure over it and put some heat in there so we don't have to worry about things freezing again next winter. This is like the second or third winter that it's frozen and broken.
I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Gearbaum?
No, I just thank you, gentlemen. I know we've been working on these type of things through the asset management group and a number of these things keep coming up and we've resolved them. What are the number of, where are we now in terms of days behind schedule?
I think we're near around 30 days. They picked up a couple of days, but then they lost a day or two, like the pile driving, they lost a day because of the wind on Friday. You know, so they pick up a day, they lose a day.
Glad to hear 30 because I think we were talking 40 before, so it sounds.
I think it's around 30.
And one thing I would like to ask our Acting City Manager, could you address a little bit about how we proactively worked with bringing our cadis and made some changes in order to assist Mr. Briggs and how we're going to manage this project?
Certainly. Our cadis is brought in to serve as the city's owner representation for this project. They have been less involved over the last portion of the project, but most recently we have gotten them reengaged and they have a new scope of work where they're going to be monitoring the finances, the timeline, and helping us out with any recommendations from a city perspective.
Excellent. And I do know that we're working on a lot of technical issues related to our technical pieces, integrating with our systems, networking and all that stuff, which I think are going to be one of the issues that we're moving forward on and hoping to resolve quicker and sooner and being able to help with that. So I appreciate everything you guys are doing right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Rice?
Yeah, I would like to echo that. I think these touchpoints with us and you instead of through consultants is really helpful because you can tell us like it is. I think it's really helpful for us to understand, you know, what's going on there and how we can help you. And then I also do appreciate that we've reengaged with our cadis. That was always a question that I had on, you know, why we were paying them and what their service was providing. So really happy to hear that we're moving forward on this and thanks for the updates. Really, really appreciate it.
Councilmember Harmout?
Just real quick, just can you remind me, you had mentioned some of the unanticipated expenses, that there were some things. What was the estimated total of that amount?
I couldn't give you an estimated total because I haven't priced out everything at this point in time. These are things that we're going to be working on over the next year or two while the project's going on. And so I really couldn't. Some of them are not going to be less expensive, some are more expensive. The heaters for the, for the old odor control building, new utility building is about $25,000. Like I say, you guys approved that back in October, so that's going to get done here in the next, hopefully the next month or so.
Any additional questions, Councilmember Harmout?
I don't.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Appreciate your time, appreciate your work on this. Have a wonderful evening. We're going to transition to reports and other announcements. Again, I'm going to start to my right and end to my left. Councilmember Lash?
Because I'm an eternal optimist, I'm going to assume that winter will be ending in Michigan eventually. And the Arts and Culture Committee wants to have everybody make sure to put on their calendars July 19th for Jazz in the Park. It's going to be bigger than last year and it's a billion success. And I believe they're in the process of looking for sponsorships now, so.
Very good. Councilmember CO?
We have a meeting in the Environmental Commission meeting, committee. We discussed projects for Earth Day and what it is we intend to do for special projects going forward throughout the year, especially as regards table at the, at the weekend farmers' market. So that's about it.
Very good. Mayor Potem Dillon?
Thank you. So the urban county, we have decided, the city has decided, we are going to bank our annual distributions. We had decided to pull that out at one point. The previous city manager had made that decision. At this point, we do not have the funds, we do not have the manpower to really manage a project utilizing any of those funds. So we do have two years left that we can bank them. So we're hoping to, by continuing to bank, we can look at bigger scale projects and within those two years, look at a matching grant opportunity for it. The Cable Commission continues to meet. We know we are still having some technical difficulties with the microphone systems. We're working sort of a cross between the regular wired mics, our ceiling mics, and they're just sort of not playing nice in the sandbox together. So we are trying desperately to get that done. We've got our manufacturers coming in and going to be doing some more assessing and tweaking of the systems. Zoning Board of Appeals did not have any action requested, so it did not meet. And a big chunk of time has been spent with the MML Municipal Services Committee with the Earn Sick Time Act, which has passed, and they tried to find some kind of compromise between the House and the Senate. And I think it definitely still needs a little bit of love and attention, but it is a good compromise and starting point. And with that, the transition team continues to meet weekly. I think it's been very successful and it's been a great tool for both the Acting City Manager, council, and staff. And you will see that the Acting City Manager's weekly reports are a little bit more detailed, which encompasses a lot of what is happening through the transition team meetings. And the asset management team met, I think since our last meeting here, but I will defer to Mr. Gearbaum if he wants to give an update on that one.
Very good. Thank you. I have two. Acting City Manager Cole, can you confirm we are still on target to receive an updated dam presentation at our next meeting on March 17?
Yes, of course.
And that'll be a presentation at the top of the agenda?
Yes, of course.
Okay, and I'm assuming we'll be promoting that on social media and on the web? And can you confirm, just for the public's edification, that we will definitely not be making a policy decision at that time? A decision is not imminent. We will follow up on that matter in the coming months.
I can 100% confirm that we will not be making a decision on the March 17 meeting about the dam.
Very good. Thank you. And then as it relates to the transition team, perhaps this is an issue that Councilmember Rice can address when I get to her. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but two weeks ago, you brought up the transition team. And I'm curious if you think that the updates that have been provided thus far are sufficient or if you're just still looking for a little bit more substance per their weekly meetings? So just something for you to address when I get to you in just a moment, okay? Just want to make sure we're following up on questions, concerns, and inquiries that were made to staff or to the chair. Councilmember Gearbaum?
Thanks, Mayor. Couple of things bringing up risk management met a week and a half ago. We're starting to address additional issues and concerns that were brought about, especially with the change in the federal government and aspects that are coming from that and the lack of funding. One of the things I do want to mention, Acting City Manager Cole has managed to transfer a lot of the information into Asana, which is now a project management software that we're using for a number of things, especially even with our strategic planning, the ability to integrate both risk management concerns and issues with strategic planning. And hopefully with our operational needs, we'll continue to expand and we'll help address a lot of the ability to not only monitor and make sure these things are occurring, but a better way of reporting back to us as a council, but also a way to make sure that things are happening. And we appreciate her work on that. Other items that are coming up, I met with the MML Land Use and Economic Development. Primarily, their discussions lately have been about some of the local control issues. A number of things facing MML have been coming up with relation to things that should be at the local control, like chicken coops and short-term rentals and those things. Although there was an act prior to the change in the leadership in Lansing regarding short-term rentals, they feel that that's basically dead in the water. But we should, as a community, be looking at that ourselves in terms of establishing something. And that was something that we talked about over a year ago with Mr. Harrington and that kind of got held up at that time. The other things that I have going, understanding, Historical Society will be meeting this Saturday for their annual meeting at 9:00 a.m., just so you're invited to it if you'd like to attend it. A couple of other things that I want to bring up as other announcements, but kind of concerns. As you know, Michigan Avenue, we've had some recent concerns in relation with accidents and such. We're going to manage to move that level and concern up higher in our risk management assessment and we'll see when that comes out. I believe our city manager is already talking about a potential assessment and study of Michigan Avenue concerns and dealing with that. Two other things that I would like to ask the city manager to investigate a look at. We've had a concern with truck weights and the issue on South Ann Arbor and within the city. I believe that response has not been responded back to it by our legal team. And as the roads are getting worse and damaged in South Ann Arbor from whatever trucks are basically exceeding the weight limits, I'd like to see what's happening with that and hopefully have a response back on that. And then lastly, planning meets next week, but I can't remember, are we doing the Danny Verity project or not?
No, not at this time. Last conversation we had with Mr. Berry, he stated that maybe June before that goes up front of the planning commission, he did submit some plans about two weeks ago, but those are for engineering review only.
Okay. And regards to, as my council fellow council member mentioned, the asset management group has a new member, John Ambrose, who's coming out with significant background in understanding and plant and aspects of what we're dealing with in terms of especially wastewater treatment plant and managing plants of that nature. The other items we've basically been dealing with on that is really understanding the priorities and categorizing essential issues versus community enhancements and those type of things, categorizing our assets, determining which things really should prioritize and which things are going to become very much a concern as we continue to run, you know, resources and things become shorter and less available. And with that transition, again, if there's anything you would ask, I feel that what Acting Manager Cole is providing weekly summarizes most of our stuff that we're doing. The only other things we kind of talk about are generally issues that may have come up from concerns that are brought in by citizens. At that point, most of those are being dealt with by staff properly and not being dealt directly by either us as council members or so forth.
Thank you. Councilmember Rice?
I'll address that first then. I think the weekly updates that we're getting from the Acting City Manager are fantastic. They're answering a lot of the questions that I've had and feeling more comfortable with that. And then I appreciate just chiming in during these discussion portions if anything pops up that you want to discuss with us. So I'm very comfortable with that. As for my updates, Parks Commission has been very busy. We had a wonderful meeting last month. Our city engineer came in and gave us an update on the status of the Mill Pond Park Dam feasibility studies, kind of where we are, what the history is, just sort of went through things with us, you know, in a different venue, same things that, you know, multiple different venues, the town hall, things like that have heard, and answered some questions for us specifically as they pertain to the park itself. She also gave us a Celine River Valley Trail update. That project is going to go out for bid in May of 2025. It is up on our ClearGov website, so if anyone is curious, the map has been updated and there's a nice little loop and some other features. So again, that was a project where we have received grant money for it. So the city was fortunate enough to receive two different large grants and it's going to be a really great asset to Mill Pond Park. Things that are kicking up for us, we have a Friends of the Park volunteer group. The kickoff meeting is going to be March 21st for this year. Look on the Celine Parks and Rec Facebook page and then I'm sure that the city PR generals will put it out on other venues as well. For that, on April the 7th, the Parks Committee will be, Commission will be providing our report to council as well as our goals for the upcoming year. And then starting at the end of March, we had received a grant last year for a pollinator, a pollinator garden in Rizdon Park, which is one of the city's smallest parks, so making it more beautiful and more productive to nature. And its location to Pleasant Ridge Elementary is going to be great. The lead for that project, Jill Estrada, has reached out to science teachers. So there may be some opportunity once the pollinator park is put into place for the kids to interact with it, to learn more, to, you know, do little cleanup projects, things like that. So really excited about those little initiatives through the Parks Program. And then lastly, the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Accessibility Committee unfortunately could not meet this week. We did not have a, or this month, we did not have a quorum, but we are continuing to work on our strategic planning and trying to align it with some of the new administrative orders that have come out so that we can make sure that the city is continuing to move forward on all of the initiatives that we have strong backing in and that we feel very strongly that's really to the community. We are very undeterred by any orders that have come down from the federal government because here at the local level, we're going to continue to make sure that we are an inclusive community and we are looking forward into the future on additional activities and additional upgrades that we can do to our services throughout the city and continuing our interactions with the schools in that capacity as well.
Very good. Thank you for that. I did want to note for the record, Councilmember Rice, to give credit where credit's due, I've gotten some rave reviews about your participation and leadership on the youth council. Your presence has been very well received and they're greatly appreciative of your efforts and you relate very well to our young people.
Thank you.
So we want to, of course, as a body, encourage our young people to consider community service and leadership in the community. I think that's vitally important. So I just wanted to acknowledge that for the public record. Councilmember Harmout, do you have reports, updates from commissions, committees, or task forces?
No, I don't. Just that we have next week coming up, the Historic District Commission meeting is next Thursday. I have not heard if it's been canceled, as far as I know, it's still going forward.
Very good. And to add to the list of items to receive some follow-up on, I would defer to the judgment of the Acting City Manager and our Community Development Director. But I think the council and more importantly, the community is probably due for an update on Thorncrest Apartments. And I know we should have some tangible updates forthcoming, so I'll leave it to your judgment whether you want to do that on March 17th or our subsequent meeting on April the 7th. Additional items before I wrap up? Go ahead, Mr. CO.
Have we ever been in touch with anybody from Adient about coming back to speak further with us about where they are?
Former Johnson-controlled properties on Monroe Street that's undergoing environmental remediation.
Yeah, certainly go ahead and come back in and give us an update or give an update from that. them, and I would report that back to you at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem Dillon?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to Acting City Manager and to the water treatment plant staff. They hosted a tour for council and department heads. It was very informative to see the processes and toured that facility again. And we also had an opportunity to have some internal training, and I think that was all worthwhile, so thank you for organizing that.
Mr. Girbo?
Just to follow up on the training and what we had on Friday, I think there was concern about how to manage the ethics policy and how to make sure that works in the process. So considering that came out of that, I just want to make sure that we have it as part of our action items from a council's perspective especially.
I'm hoping to bring that back the first meeting in April, and if the schedule will allow, the next meeting on the 17th.
Thank you.
Perhaps somebody can provide some clarification on this last item meeting dates?
Just this document that she puts out now.
Okay. Is there, what's?
It's a list of-
I apologize for being obtuse. What's the issue?
This is a report from our city clerk on all the upcoming dates for meetings for the city.
Okay, very good. Are there any questions about that? No? Okay. Yeah, I don't know that it needs to be enumerated as an item in the future unless my council colleagues object. I think it's important to provide the document, but I don't think we need to list it on the agenda. That's just my perspective.
Thank you.
Okay. We come to the second public comment period now. Under the Open Meetings Act, any person may come forward at this time, make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but of course, not required to state their name for the record. Are there any citizen comments this evening? Simply come to the podium whenever you're ready. You will have three minutes. You can address any questions or concerns that you'd like.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and it has nothing to do and both everything to do with your agenda this evening. I'm here tonight to stand in solidarity with your fellow council member and all of the employees of NOAA who were recently and unceremoniously fired. When an administration believes that a reduction in workforce or RIF is warranted, it is obligated to follow the Workforce Reshaping Operations Handbook, a 120-page document last updated by the Office of Personnel Management, or OPM, in March of 2017. It lays out the actions required pursuant to U.S. Code Title V, government employees enacted by Congress and maintained by the Office of Law Revision Council, or LRC, of the House of Representatives. Federal termination laws are in place to protect the rights of civil servants while also allowing the government to manage its workforce efficiently. However, special rules apply due to the unique nature of government work. Because federal employees are not private sector workers, they are afforded protection against arbitrary or politically motivated firings. Their jobs allow them to carry out public business without fear of reprisal, and therefore extensive documentation and a review of process are therefore required for proposed removals to prevent abuses of power within the civil service system. A mere cursory knowledge of what is occurring today offers surety that this administration is in fact in violation of U.S. Code. And while the federal workforce accounts for less than 5% of the budget, and yes, that includes the salaries of Congress members, I can only begin to imagine what costs this will add to the federal budget as a result of the lawsuits that should and will result because of these illegal firings. While some may believe that the value of a federal worker consists of a pulse and two firing neurons, I have deep respect for the work done by NOAA and other federal agencies and their employees. Could our federal government be less morleene? Of course, but there are mechanisms in place for responsible reductions. Under the Clinton administration, Congress spent six months of review involving over 250 federal workers, resulting in the Federal Workforce Restructuring Act of 1994, which passed in the House, 391 to 17, and in the Senate, 99 to 1, allowing a RIF of 273,000 federal employees over a five-year period. That is what a real democracy looks like. What we are experiencing now is an authoritarian takeover of our democracy. If you're saying, "See anger on my face," it is real, but it's also protection. Because to fully feel the grief for the country that I once knew would be intolerable. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Very well stated. Are there additional citizen comments this evening? Again, you'll have three minutes. You can address any topic that's on your mind. Please speak into the mic and make sure the green light is illuminated.
Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Gross, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to restate my concern about the safety of having gender-inclusive or gender-neutral restrooms at the REC Center based on the fact that women and children would be changing in that locker room and that it's not, based on the biological differences in strength between males and females, I'm concerned that it would, that having gender-neutral restrooms would allow predators to take the provision and then sneak through in order to prey on women and children. That's my concern. And whether there is something to make all the locker rooms single service or anything like that, but I'm just concerned about the safety hazards that having a gender-neutral locker room could pose to the women and children in Celine. As someone with younger siblings and someone who loves the REC Center very much and has even worked there and spent a lot of happy time there, I'm just concerned about that safety. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Additional citizen comments? Again, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Chang Ming Fan. Mr. Mayor, council friends, I have two things to share with you. Number one is 25-47, the letter of Mayor, the Joint Committee between the city and the Celine School. What I want to add, if my may, we should add Celine District Library. And this is the public sphere will form nicely, maybe you can call it a golden triangle, SSS. Why is that so important? And which is brought up, second topic, city spend a lot of money, time, and also support for the Celine District School, Celine District Library. I benefit hugely, and I think we should really make this more productive by joining the Celine District Library people in this committee. So this is number one. Why I come up to talk about this, what I benefit, recent studies for the last half year, as you all know, salt project, Celine area, like tower, the extension of that related with the nuclear ring, besides the other eight rings of energy, but nuclear ring have to be underground. So I got quite a lot of information free and also so convenient from the Celine District Library. The important things of Celine build this tower is not just energy, and also most important thing is to link up together the nuclear molten salt reactor. And this is so, the whole world is trying to race up except that United States. We are 22 years behind the Chinese, 18 years behind Russia. This technology using molten salt started in 1960s. But since then, we did nothing. So let the rest of the world, China, Russia, Canadian, France, to catch up and then create way ahead of us. So we should start from Celine because we have the salt, molten salt, easily can build. Not only that, we have the wonderful leadership of all of you selected and elected by the taxpayers, and also we have democratic system. We have a lot of good mind and brains next to University of Michigan. As meeting with Jack Seo, we talked about the Third Sister Lake, which is the Sagino Forest. That is the one of the example, is called the Third Sister, is a beautiful place to start it there. And also the Celine Trail, like you saw the video, that is a place to start this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Chang Ming. Are there additional citizen comments this evening? I would def, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Karen Peters. I just have a couple of comments or questions. I was glad to hear that we're going to have the Jazz Fest again in July, but how will that impact the, will the trail already be started then, the construction of the trail?
Why don't you go through all of your questions, and at the end, if we can address them, we will do our best to do so.
Oh, okay. The other one is, I was kind of blown away at the price that you're having to pay to find a new city manager, and then even more blown away that you would have to pay 3,000 more to get the person ready to be active on the ground when we already have a wonderful Acting City Manager, Al Cole, that seems like she could train that person so that they're ready to have feet on the ground. I mean, I think the $3,000 over and above is frivolous. So I'm welcome any responses.
We'll respond at the end. I want to get all the public comments, and then we will make some comments based on what we heard this evening.
Oh, so you want me to sit down?
When you finish your remarks, yes.
Okay, well, I'm finished.
Okay, thank you. Are there additional citizen comments from those in the audience this evening? I would defer to the city clerk. Do we receive any written comments in advance of tonight's meeting, which the individual or individuals wanted their remarks read at this time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let me begin by, of course, the chair's discretion, but Councilmember Rice, because your name was inferred or made reference to, if there's any statement you'd like to make at this time, we would welcome that. I don't mean to put you on the spot, and you certainly don't need to say anything, but because you were made reference of, I wanted to provide you that opportunity.
I just want to thank you for the support. One thing that I would like to say to our community is that we are your friends and neighbors. We are civil servants for a reason, and we devote our life to service. I devote 24 hours a day to service. I'm here to serve our community. I'm here to serve our Great Lakes. And so just remember that as we go throughout this process and as these, this destruction of federal government structure continues to happen, these are your friends and neighbors, these are parents at your kids' schools, these are future scientists, these are future civil servants who are being removed from their positions. So I thank you very much for your support. Secondary to that, I will answer the question to a broad extent about the Celine River Valley Trail. So the bids for construction are going out in May of 2026. I can't speak for DPW or the engineer, but I would suspect that construction either will not start that quickly at the beginning of July or will be able to work around the area where the Jazz Fest will take place.
Thank you. Yes, I don't see the Celine River Valley Trail in any way impacting either positively or negatively Jazz in the Park for 2025. To Ms. Gross's questions, if you'd like to connect with my office afterwards, I think I could either refer you to the Acting City Manager or Parks and Rec Director and probably alleviate a number of your concerns. I would welcome that conversation. And finally, to the statements that were made about the city manager's search process, the hiring committee reviewed multiple proposals. The price was very much in line with other firms. In fact, it was $5 less than its nearest competitor. So you're welcome and free to do your own independent research, but these types of comprehensive nationwide searches are generally in the price range. And I think based on the service that DUAL-HO will be providing, we will get quite a bang for our buck. I'm very optimistic about the process and the ultimate outcome. If there are no additional comments or questions this evening or anything to be brought up from the dais, the chair would be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:39. Moved by Girbo, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Dillon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.